The August eighteenth meeting of the Marion County Council will now come to order. We'll begin with the invocation given by the public. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight, folks at home. We do know that there is some Comcast activity in the area, so for everyone viewing from home tonight, I hope that the internet doesn't go down, but it will restore enough load, is what I'm hoping, if we do have that problem. Hopefully, they've got the issue corrected. We need to have roll call. I see that all members are present except for Councilwoman Jennings. Is that sufficient?
Yes.
We will need a motion for the approval of minutes of August fourth.
Seven.
We have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? None being heard? All in favor? It is unanimous. We need the approval of the agenda.
Someone?
I think we need to make an amendment to the agenda.
Yes, okay. Is there a discussion about the agenda?
I'd like to add to the agenda a one-personal closing session.
A one-personal added to closing session? Okay. Is there any further discussion of that? Then would you like to amend your motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as stated with the addition of a closing session. Discuss the motion.
Second. Okay. Motion and second. All in favor? The agenda is set. We are going to move things around just a little bit tonight so that some of our law enforcement can get back to duty and things can be moved in case there is an emergency. So, without further ado, as Frank Farmer and Deborah Wood enter the room, it's time for their presentation. Up there in the room. I believe that that concludes Mr. Farmer's presentation of the blue line flags, and I want to say a big note of appreciation to him for doing that and for supporting our law enforcement officers. So, I believe we can proceed. Do we agree? Okay. We have, now in the public presentations, we have Bill. Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Some time ago, it was last year actually, that this council saw something about this possibility. In fact, you received some land between River Street and Middle Fork of the Holston River as a gift maybe two years ago, and with the idea of it becoming an extension of the Riverwalk. And so, I've got a presentation to show you, to give you an update on what's being thought about, what's been done, and what the town council is being asked to do in connection with that. So, I don't think we need to use this graphic, but you have this letter that I wrote to the town manager.
Yeah, they have all that in your pack.
Yeah, a couple of months ago, where I sort of described what has happened so far. I've gotten a lot of inputs from a lot of different people about this, but the most important input came from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And Corey Kanakel from the Avenue Office of that agency came up and looked at the property and had a lot of good ideas about how to create a riparian barrier, which is basically a filter for water that comes into the stream from the stream bank. And it's a natural way of purifying water so that the fish habitat is good. And Corey came up with a planting plan, and I don't have that with me today. He's actually on extended leave until August twenty-fifth, so I won't be able to give that to you today. But what he was offering last year was to actually do the planting with his agency of trees and shrubs and wildflowers in that nine-hundred-foot section of the river. This is, can we go to some photographs so I can show you where we're talking about? The first one I want to show them is from the bridge.
I can put these in any order, so.
Yeah, okay. We'll just have to pick and choose. I can use them as they come up. Okay. I'll just take those slides in order of the way they come up on the screen, and we can talk about them. The other entity that's been involved is the Boy Scouts. We're not able to do the screen, too?
No, this is new one. Sorry.
That's okay, except for these guys. So, shucks, what's his first name? His last name is Ham, and he's a Boy Scout in the Boy Scout Troop, and he's doing this project here. And one piece of that is this kiosk, which is finished now, just got finished about two weeks ago. And that will have display surfaces on both sides. This is thirty feet off of the River Street, and that area, that unpaid area or that paid area you're seeing in the front is actually the slab of one of the original Lincoln Industries buildings that were on this site. And so, there's a double purpose in this site in my mind. That is to provide an extension of the Riverwalk so that folks can come on down from where it ends now on the other side of Church Street. And also, the Boy Scouts wanted to be able to get to the stream. And so, there's a location just thirty feet west of that kiosk where they're building a set of steps down from this elevation down to the bottom, right on the upstream side of the old dam across the river at that location. So, that will give a way for waiters to get to the stream for fishing. It's a good fishing area. It's kind of low water. It's nice and wide and low at that point. I see people fishing in the stream with waiters. You can fish on the bank as well. So, that will have Mattie Austin, who's just graduated from Marion Senior High School, worked on this project for a lot of months, like six or eight months, consulting primarily with me and with Betsy Sagers, whose great-grandparents and great-great-grandparents opened these factories back in the eighteen hundreds in developing a victorial history, industrial history of the site. And that's what we go on this board right here. So, it'd be a permanent display approximately five feet by four feet that shows a map of what it looked like in nineteen-twenty and has a history of the industries that were developed there as well as the people that did it. And that's what we go on this side of the kiosk. And on the other side, Corey has a nice graphic that shows how plants can filter runoff before it gets to a stream. So, that would be an educational component of the kiosk. The scouts, go to the next slide with you.
Okay, so we have a motion and second. Does that answer your question, or do you have further comments?
I'd like to add something. I started this like twice and got shut down pretty hard. Has that been taken care of? The neighbor come down, told us to stop what we were doing?
Oh, yeah.
So, that's smoothed over?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Okay. Any questions you want to ask, please? Okay, if you have any questions.
I agree.
Okay. Later, we'll be motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll send it to the recreation committee. All in favor?
I think I made it clear in describing the vegetation, but the original thought that I had in my mind, it was the typical grass where you could play frisbee and have picnic tables, and that's not what this is being conceived to be now. It's more of a natural setting, which is more consistent with the intent of the Riverwalk. So.
Thank you. Moving along. Yes. Yeah. Okay. We have public comment time, and I'm going to preface public comment time with a few rules that we would like to see everybody, or not rules, guidelines, basically. Of course, as normally, you will approach the podium and give us your name and address. And public comment time is not to debate issues, but it's to express your personal opinions on the topics related to operations specific to the town of Marion. The time limit is three to five minutes, and of course, you will be alerted when your time is fouled up, and hopefully, you can promptly conclude your remarks. We need everyone to keep their remarks civil and respectful and use the proper decorum. Refrain from the use of any profane or obscene comments or gestures. Any speaker that doesn't abide by these restrictions may be ruled out in order and asked to conclude their comments. And the town council members and employees of the town of Marion respect the opinions of the citizens and would ask the same level of respect to the county committee. I think that guidelines might help us all to get through public comments and understand each other better. So, that being said, the first person that we have for public comments is Mr. Hopper.
First thing I wanted to mention, y'all gave away flags a while ago.
Yes, can you give us your name and address?
But y'all gave away flags just now, and if you look up the flag code section G, it says no line should be placed upon a flag. It's the same as burning the flag. So, any blue line flags you have in a public office or vehicles need to be removed. It's also known as a game flag. But the reason I came to Marion is to spread this video across all the counties around here about what you're doing. Somebody told me on the twenty-fourth, y'all are going to send in the SS storm troopers to throw away the homeless and things, look what little they have, and chase them away. Now, they're on public land. Y'all might sit in your comfy little houses and work for two, three years to shove these people aside and forget about them. I did a video where one of your police officers stopped a mother, father, and a daughter. Didn't help them anyway, just gave them a hard time. And nothing has changed. How do y'all feel about it? I want to weigh, a little thing they have a jar that means everything to them, it's nothing to y'all. Throw it in the trash, chase them away, don't let anybody see them. As long as they're hidden, they're not here, right? So, if y'all want to chase them away on the twenty-fourth, I would like for y'all to tell me the day you're going to do it and the time you're going to do it, so I could be down there to show the world how Marion treats the homeless. It's a shame. You're talking about throwing them away, what are you doing to help them? Is there anything? Is there anything y'all do to help them? They don't want to be in that place. There could be a father down there that lost his whole family in a car wreck. He's giving up. But y'all want to prey on the weak, just like the police officers do. They prey on the weak. And you go to court, and it's the same thing. The cop might say something, it's a lie, you're guilty. And y'all are guilty of what you're doing to the homeless, every single one of you. I'd like for y'all to spend just two days out there trying to make it, and then have somebody come over, take maybe a shirt, the only shirt you have, and throw it in the trash, and tell them to go hide in the woods and let it seal. Talking about this trail, is six hundred yards too close to have a homeless person? Ms. Hayes brought it up. Six hundred yards, people still see them? If they need to be a mile, half a mile, what is it? What do you want? Nothing? Just forget about them. But I'm requesting that y'all tell me what day, what time. I want to be there in video and to show everybody how y'all are handling. That's it.
Thank you for your remarks, and I'm not aware of any plans that you're speaking of, but we will have our next speaker, who is going to be Sarah Taylor. And if you.
Sarah Taylor, six hundred forty. I've got some papers here, and I'm going to be reading from some of them, because I want to make sure that I'm bringing the right things out to the council. I have with me some emails. I have some exchanges between the town, and it's about the FOIA policy, Freedom of Information. From what I saw up to yesterday, the town of Marion does not have anything published on their website about guidelines for fees, charges, this type of thing. If you look on the courthouse, the sheriff's office, Smith County, they have this all published, and I think it's been there for a while. So, my experience with my personal request was being met with what I would consider to be an inflated fee, and that was designed to discourage me from further pursuit of that request. But then I run upon another one, and it quickly became apparent that this was a recurring thing. And this other one, you know, you guys had a request for some video that was from another citizen, and it ended up being broken down to a total of five hundred and eight dollars and sixty-six cents for production of video files off the town's GoPros that they were on private property during an abatement. And that is just copying from one device to another. That's not the six hours that it was broke down to be. I don't know why that would be the case. It was said that it was unredacted according to the email that I'm looking at. And then I have another one here, and it says, I'm going to read this in part, being mindful of privacy and things like that, but it says, "The information requested in your emails will be provided to you upon your payment of five hundred and eight dollars and sixty-six cents. You need to make the payment to Cindy Stanley, town clerk. If you no longer want the information due to the cost, please advise the same." Now, I think that that's a lot of money, and I think that it kind of focuses on people who may be disadvantaged or cannot afford it, and it's designed to be a deterrent. But this information nonetheless is needed, and I wouldn't want somebody to do this to me. I wouldn't want somebody to do this to my neighbors, but unfortunately, it happens. So, I have brought with me today a cashier's check in the amount of five hundred and eight dollars and sixty-six cents, and it is for the request. And I will not name the person, but you know who it is. You can talk to Mr. Fennick about that. And I would like for, Chief Teszner, could you pass this around to the council and let them see it, and I would like for it to end up with Miss Stanley and for her to verify the amount. And I would draw your attention to the memo on the bottom. Now, while you pass that check around, I would like for everybody to know that this check was from donations from people within the town of Marion and a few outside of Marion, because they have seen what happens, and they have expressed some concerns about information and transparency. And I agree, I think there's a problem with it. Now, we had some overage. We collected this money in forty-eight dollars. We had some overage for that, and we are going to apply the money to replace some of the food that was taken in that process. So, that is all that I have right now, but I would also like to request that you promptly provide that person with the information they've requested, and I will follow up to make sure it was provided. And Miss Stanley, can you verify the check that you've received it?
It's five hundred and eight dollars and sixty-six cents.
Thank you.
Good for you. I hope that that information is given to you in a very timely fashion. We'll get that out immediately if we can. The next person that we have is J. S. Staley.
My name is J. S. Staley, and I've lived in Marion for a considerable period of time. It's always good to be able to follow Mr. Huber, because that way you can avoid the BS he has spread. I'm here to simply say the clock's still ticking on my being here, my paying attention. September is gone. When September is gone, there needs to be some action on the part of this body to address some of the problems that have been brought to your attention over the last five months. I just hope that you will address it in a fair manner to everybody concerned. A lot of neighborhood individuals have known nothing about what's transpired. I have yet to hear any explanation from the Health Department about the Middle Fork of the Holston River being turned into an open sewer, and that's certainly what it is as it flows right now. Where Mr. Huber got his endorsement on fish and game is beyond me. I'd like to get the names of people on fish and game so I can talk to them about the real life. Also, if you're going to undertake this project at Mr. Huber's, I want to have an environmental impact. You're going to burn foliage down this fall, a pre-environmental impact statement as to the impact on and a post in the spring environmental impact statement. I think it's important that you pay close attention to this. Time's coming with the explanation for everybody's going to be, oh, it's cold outside. We can't turn these people out into cold. You're right. That's why some action needs to be taken right now. It has to be undertaken now, and you have to decide what you're going to do and how you're going to go about it. I hope you will get off your ducks and undertake the endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Staley. Our next speaker will be Bill Stamper.
Bill Stamper, six-five-nine Spruce. So, I would just like to play a recording and go from there. Give me one second, just following up.
Yes. My concern, just so for the community, the people that we have a problem with trash, these trash cans are not going to solve their problems. We're not going to get care of them, probably still not going to put trash in the trashcan, still the trashcan, never bring the trash in the bag. It's just, I don't think that's my personal opinion that's going to solve a lot of our problems, but that's all.
The overall theater of our audience anymore in the last would be asked in reward. Well, I'm not probably getting it, but I'm just saying, during self-parenting, you're, you know what? You're online. So, motion and second, all in favor of sending it to committee.
So, anyway, with that being said, of course, that wasn't us speaking, that was y'all speaking. Now that we know how y'all really feel about us, your integrity, sir, you don't have integrity. You don't even know the word integrity. I saw five of y'all laughing whenever everybody was making fun of the town for stealing trashcans and the integrity. I saw five of you laughing, so I brought you something, that way that y'all would know that we thank you for how you really feel about us. Chief, if you'll bring those in here, please. Yeah, right there. I got all five of you alone, it says you're number one. I need you to give one to Carter.
I'll have it right here in the back.
Okay. One to Carter, one to Apple, one to Miss Jennings, of course, she's not here, one to Spencer, one to Gates. The rest of y'all, y'all were doing a great job. I never once, I've watched that video a hundred times, you've got integrity. You've got integrity. You never laughed, you never smiled, you never talked bad, but the rest of them did. I don't know if y'all saw it, but everybody in Smith County did, everybody in Marion. So, if you want to talk about integrity, you don't have any. You never have.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Staley.
You're welcome.
The next speaker we have is David Fulton.
David. David, Staley. Terrified. David Fulton, Pearl Avenue. I've been to Walmart twice in the past two months to pay the town water bill. I am informed you cannot pay the town water bill at Walmart. I'm just wondering why, when you can pay Appalachian, cable, phone company, but you cannot pay the town of Marion water bill at Walmart? Secondly, I spoke with Mr. Gates this week and Mrs. Jennings, and I will inform the rest of you, due to the video last town meeting, they've been, two families notified me that if the town council disrespected the mayor, as you did, how do you respect the people of the town?
That's right.
And two of the family will not buy homes here in Marion. And that is due to the comment and action of the town council two weeks ago. Thank you.
Mr. Fulton, thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Charles Hayden.
Name's Charles Hayden, seven-two-six South Chair Street, and I want to thank Billy, he more or less made it clear what I intend to speak about, so I can move on to something else. One of the things is Freedom of Information Act. Twenty thirteen, it clearly says that you're supposed to have a written policy in place noting current fee charges. Each public body may set its own policy within the cost limits under Freedom of Information Act. You do not have that policy. And it said public body. It did not say for your request, officer decide how much to charge somebody. My contention is, and all the curios around, county, the court, all of them has the policy in place. Whipple's got it. They're all around, but not Marion. Now, why are you sitting on your position you're in and turning it all over to one man when he's not on council? And it says here, the public body is to set that policy and put it on the website. This is ridiculous, that you turn too much control over to one man. Whipple's got it, they're all around, but not Marion. Now, why are you sitting on your position you're in and turning it all over to one man when he's not on council? And it says here, the public body is to set that policy and put it on the website. This is ridiculous that you turn too much control over to one man. And speaking of turning over to one man, on the farm animal ordinance, he very clearly said that no farm animal could be used as a commercial support. Why bank the difference? Because right here, federal guidelines said unlike service animals, emotional support animal is not limited to a dog. As many types of animals can be trained as certified emotional support animal includes cats, horses, pigs, even hamsters. So, now are we supposed to take his advice or are we supposed to take the federal regulations' advice? This is ridiculous, it really is. Same way with the discharge of weapons in town of Marion. You suddenly decided in your ordinance that you can't bow hunt in town. Well, the state code that he used to justify that says you can't shoot a gun too close to a road or a school. That had nothing to do with the Harrisoff guns, has nothing to do with our rifles, has nothing to do with a bow. So, he used a state code to justify whatever they wanted to do. Also says if you do ban no hunting in certain areas, you must have a sign put up around that area for the public to know. Well, you're banning it in the whole town, well, that means we need a no hunting sign on every entrance into this town. So, who come up with this? I don't know. I think he is totally making up his own rules and talking about integrity. I don't think that's integrity when he tells y'all that the state just occasions for ordinance that you're writing comes out and not have not a thing in the world to do with it, nothing. Now, I do want to add just a little bit. If you do put regulations on hunting, state law clearly says that you are to notify the gang department, put your regulation in free book, and it's got to be in there by the first amendment of every. Well, this one, there's several locality that has complied with that, but what, not Marion? We got no hunting, but it's not complying with the state law. Or it is, like everybody else says, or is the integrity? And with what Billy had to say, it was said that we are inside, y'all's integrity, but when we give the resolution to the mayor, it was our appreciation of who we thought was doing a good job.
That's right.
Now, I never heard so much blatant disregard for our mayor and the public with those comments and those laughs that happened. I would call for everyone that opened their mouth and thought it was funny, please leave. I'd love for that to happen, because we need people here that really respects the public, not try to control us.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Lance Van Dolson. Did I get that right, sir? Ben Dolson?
Van Dolson.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to go right to something, but because of some of the things you said tonight, I've got to upgrade that. Two meetings ago, my wife and two of my neighbors had come down here. This has to do with the River Street thing. I thought it was interesting that that came up. I happen to have the joy of living above the River Walk. Well, we can open our windows at night so we can have the smoke come in from the fires down there, and we become the walking path for the folks that are camping so nicely down there. I get to go out and pick up the cigarette box and the junk food wrappers on Love Street, which is off of North Street. It's, I have, with the heat we've been having lately, I have a very boiled corn terrier, and I'll put her in a car and take her for a ride. And we come up around that way, we go down to River Street, and the smoke down there is somewhat, and I open the windows so you can hang out. From where the boy scouts are having their, putting in their project there, if you go another forty yards or so on the condos across the street, and I guess they're two-hundred-and-ninety-two to about three-hundred-and-eight thousand or whatever, right across from there are the condos, if you go down about forty yards, I've witnessed what I feel of drug transactions because the people take off so quickly. If you go another ten yards or fifty-yard line, there's the two completely demolished automobiles off to the side. River Street happens to be kind of a main thoroughfare for the people that aren't coming up to our properties anymore, which is getting really old because I don't like eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock at night, same corn terrier. She starts barking, I go down to one of my three basement doors, and somebody's jiggling the knob. I open the door, and here's a young woman standing there, and it's, I got a Ruger SP-101 in three-fifty-seven. If I drive you into this house, if you made it into this house, you know the young lady could have been killed? She doesn't say a word, she takes off, walking slowly away. And another young lady coming down, and it's like, and this is too weird. Go, whoa, whoa, where are you going? Down the river. Where are you coming from? I don't know. Okay. My neighbor who is, she's still working for a time, but she's in her seventies, nurse next to me, she says, Lance, this guy comes into my driveway, he was mumping, I asked him what he wanted, he's looking for water. And I said, he's saying, you know? She says, no, but I'm getting afraid. Carolyn, one of the two ladies that spoke two meetings ago, lives, oh, late from us across the street, she said, you know, that truck that stopped in front of my house, now we got people coming up to the driveway and knocking on the door. And there again, she's afraid. I won't mention the name of another woman down the way. She says, somebody coming up North Jersey Street in a white pickup truck, it's getting airborne. And she's got kids. So, that isn't too, that isn't too well, too good either. And just last week, I was here to talk, this last meeting, but you were doing the tree thing, so I didn't want to hold things up and took off. But this gentleman's come out, he goes, hey, he's using the footpath. I said, whoa, 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 wait, wait a minute. I said, where are you coming from? Well, down there. Oh, I know, I know where you're coming from. I said, pick up the cigarette butt. And he did that, he was very polite, oh, I won't come through here again. I said, no, you shouldn't go through. He said, we were tired of this. And this is all leading up to this one. But his name is Justin. He said, well, I've got two kids who are in foster care right now. Those two kids are being taken care of by, I guess, a mother-in-law. He's got a wife that's pregnant, third kid. They live in, where do you live, Justin? I live in a tent. He said, oh, okay, I know where you live, because in the springtime before all the leaves come in, we could see way down there where you guys are at. I'll get to the main point now. The reason I came today, I was going to bring up last time, the BOD program. When Bill Rush is still here, I asked a pack a long time ago about abandoned buildings, and the BOD is that blighted abandoned, underutilized, derelict buildings. And he had voiced, he said, we've knocked down twelve, and we got a whole bunch more on the list. Now, that, they had talked to people in both Petersboro and in Marion, and somebody had done an interview from the town to this reporter. And what I was, wanted to get to without the other, with the intro, was what is the town doing with all these abandoned houses and buildings in Marion? We've been here almost seven years now, and they said, oh, yeah, those things are going to be coming down. Well, we haven't seen much progress. And the idea is, is it more compassionate to have pregnant women living in a tent? Or do you find out which of these houses can be, have church folks buy it for back taxes or something, or knock these things down? Because I'll tell you, young couples your age aren't going to come in here and buy when they see that stuff. And if they're going to buy those condos for three-hundred grand so they can watch drug sales going on, it's not going to work. And we are personally getting sick and tired of the smoke coming into our home and people going through our neighborhood, which, Carolyn's eighty-two, Jane is seventy-four, I'm seventy-five, and it's getting old. And so, that BOD program, if you don't, I just want to know if the progress on that program or if it's even being done now. That's what I originally just wanted to ask about that. And I'd appreciate if you could either elaborate or think about it or see what's being done with that.
Good question.
I appreciate it.
You might want to go to the next EDA meeting, okay? And I don't know when that's going to be, but if you'll get with someone after this, we'll make sure you have that information.
Can you?
I was first meeting at the first one of the twelve new police departments. And if you'd like to be added to the list, let us know, we'll add you to the list. No, it's probably him, he's at Charlie. Mr.? Okay, so we can make that happen for him, maybe we can, it's more. We now will move along with James Parks. James?
Okay. My name's James Parks, one-sixty-four Market Street. We have this, I guess it's for drug inhabitants moving in our neighborhood. I'm just surprised at the town council, years ago, you ran next to us into the town, and all the residents up through there was mostly residents, you zoned it commercial. And I was like, wow, you know, Dunkin' Donuts or a motel's going to buy us all out, destroy this closed Market Street? But y'all put a dang residential right in the middle of all of ours now by allowing this group come in from Whitfield or wherever. I'm not sure the name of it started out as being Home for Veterans, that would make us all feel kind of bad, you know? Oh, for veterans. Well, now it's run by, I guess, Mount Rogers. I don't know who's paying the bills or anything, I have no contacts, I don't think your town has any contacts to these people. I don't know what's going on, but why in the world, all that area, the gateway coming into Marion was all right up y'all's alley, zoned commercial? Well, let me ask, has anybody been up there? South sixteen, we've been here three times and talked about it, I know Avery's been up there. Has anybody else stopped by Market Street and looked at the new drug rehab center? Well, it's temporary housing. To me, it's a hotel, which is a commercial business. I don't understand. And I think Mount Rogers, we were contacted and said they would be here tonight to explain their end of it. I'm not real sure what's going on, but why in the world would you? It devalued my property, not because you're moving drug addicts back there, because now it's residential, and somebody looks at it all as being commercial, but right in the middle, you guys decided to make it back residential. So, I don't know, do we all apply? Is it that easy to flip-flop zoning? I mean, what, I thought y'all had it your way, you had it all zoned commercial up through there, the whole damn thing? But now you've got a residential right in the middle that some company comes in, it devalued my property, they'll say, well, we got to deal with this now. What, to go to town council, what, to put it back to residential, what, to change it back to commercial? And the way y'all flip-flop, I guess it'd be easy to do, I don't know. I guess, it was mostly houses, though, if you look up the map. And I talked with predecessors, and they said, yeah, one day we'll close Market Street. I can see motels up here, Dunkin' Donuts and, you know, this is right at the interstate, right at the gateway to Marion, and y'all, all of our residents are commercial. But then you let this one guy come in and zone residential. Now, what's, did anybody go look at it to see the possibilities of what Marion could have up there? I mean, I just don't see it, I don't see your effort coming up there. Like I said, Avery's been there, he knows, I'm talking about. My house is beautiful, I don't want it tore down. It used to sit on the corner of Cherry and Iron Street. It was, I think it was the Health Department back in the day, and they moved it before the new interstate bridge. It's oak and built in, it's beautiful place. I mean, you know, you just got to imagine it was built right on the road with these other five houses. But why in the world, mine's uncommercial, and my neighbor's is commercial, and the other neighbor's commercial, everything's commercials, the buildings, every little house up there, except this guy from Whitfield that y'all allowed to build a drug center. And it's just temporary for housing, it's nothing, they're not going to live there maybe a week or a month. And I don't know who pays the bills. To me, it should have been commercial if it's going to be a motel-type thing. They don't have a porch, it's staring into a cliff out back, you need to go look at it. If you're not delusional and young drugs and they put you in this place, you're going to be a damn delusional, you're going to be insulting back there. The back deck, it won't have a front porch, there's not room for a front porch, I don't think. And they built a two, three-foot walkway out back against the cliff, if a rock don't fall on you, you'll be, all right, you can take you to Suboxone or whatever. And I don't really agree with us paying for people to stay on Suboxone forever. I don't understand it exactly, I haven't been addicted to that, but they stay on it forever. It's like, I got buddies that went on there for five years, just going to take like two milligrams of Suboxone every day. It don't really make you high, they say, I have no idea, but still, just to be able to counsel a flip-flop that easy from all commercial, you had it made, you could do anything up there. You could, you could have promoted some company to come in and make it all accessible to commercial right there at the interstate coming into Marion, but no, you stuck us a resident right in the middle, and you didn't even think about it. You just, yeah, okay, you've got to look at it. I don't think none of you, some of you weren't here unsure when they made the decision, but still, if you get a chance, go up there and look at our new drug rehab, or whatever you want to call it. Does it have a name? I don't, who knows? They changed it like four or five times, they really lied, I feel, to this town, but it was going to be residential for anybody, but no, it's not for anybody, it's just for a certain, there's four single apartments with a tiny window and no porch, no yard. We thought that setbacks on R-three, you had to have a yard, but these people don't have a yard. I don't know how the zoning or the, I don't know, it's just confusing to me that y'all would fall for this right in the middle of the commercial property. But if it's that easy to change, maybe we should all change ours for residential and really block it up there where it can never be touched and go back to commercial. But we all held off of going residential because we thought the town had a plan, maybe, that they wouldn't come up through there, like I said, close Market Street, tear down some places, put in some nice entrance into Marion right there. I don't think y'all have a plan. I'm not really sure that they, why they annexed it, I have no idea. I mean, but if you get a chance, go southside sometime. We're about the only people southside of Marion, we're always kind of, our sewer runs over, you just keep adding on more lines, sewer squirts up out of the ground, been doing it for twenty years that I've been there. But now you've added on more and more, just keep, if there is a project coming someday to redo the sewer down through there. But why you made it residential right in the middle of all that commercial? So, look at the map sometime. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll look into that.
Yeah.
And next we have Ben Robbins.
I'm going to yield my time, I think, Mr. Parks, Mr. Stamper, Mr. Hayden, several of the others have, have said, anything I would say would be repeated. And, you know, I, I choose to keep my integrity tonight.
Thank you for yielding your time, sir. Our next speaker will be Charles Wosley.
No, I pass.
Okay.
I gotta get a hell of a season.
Yes, sir. We'll, okay, that concludes public comment time. And now we will go with council members and their reports, and we'll go right down the line of the way through, Dr. Gates.
I have a question.
Okay, Councilmember Spencer.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we sent to the ordinance committee to update our codes, if we've adopted from the state, but I understand they haven't been reviewed in some time, and they need to be updated.
I'll say that motion.
Okay, are you speaking of our entire code vote?
Yeah.
Okay, that's.
Did you repeat that? We couldn't hear what you said. Did you repeat that? We couldn't hear what you said.
To me, I'm sorry. I said, "We want to go to the ordinance committee to update our town codes. We've adopted the state of Virginia codes, but the town codes have not been updated on some things, and they need to be reviewed occasionally, it's been, how many years since it's been done in March? So it's time they are reviewed and updated."
Okay, I don't know exactly what that is going to look like, but we have a motion and a second to review our ordinances with the ordinance committee.
Our town codes.
Our town codes. Okay. So that's a, that's a very nonspecific.
Request.
Request, yes, awesome, awesome task. But if the ordinance committee wants to look into that, then I really don't understand, so you have a motion to update our, I, I really feel that, we have a motion and second, so we'll open for discussion. Does anyone want to?
I'll let our attorney explain something.
The town code is pretty extensive, and will take.
We cannot hear over here, he needs to use the mic better. Please.
The town code is pretty extensive, and it will take considerable amount of time to go through each section and get it updated, so that it, that they correlate with the Virginia code, and they cite the current Virginia code. The code changes from time to time, and as has, in this case, there was one that we discussed at the last council meeting, that the code it referenced was repealed December of nineteen ninety-seven. So it does need to be updated, but it'll take considerable amount of time.
So basically, what you're saying is, that we are, we are, all the things that the state has done over the last twenty years, we're updating our code in compliance with what the state has said. If the changes, if the state made changes, that our code had something that wasn't in compliance with what the state now said, we're gonna bring that up to state.
Correct, so each, we do it at the last meeting, July thirtieth or whatever date that, that meeting, June thirtieth or whatever date that last meeting falls on, or we adopt the code of Virginia. So even though our code may be referencing something that is no longer in effect, we we've taken care of it by adopting the state code. What is being asked is that we have it so that it correlates with the current state code.
And I think people are looking at the state code on our website, and they're getting false information.
Well, there are some sections.
Yes, and I think periodically, we do this, and it's come, it's been twenty years since it's been done, it's come to do it.
But there's some cases that cut in, there's never, all rural local ordinance.
Well, there may be, it just, I'll just have to start at the first, start processing the way through. Now, when we update ordinances, we have tried to have it so that it's referencing the current state code. So there are some that, that we've already done it, but we have not found through each and every single town code section and done it.
So best to just do them section.
Started from me, and it's gonna take an enormous amount of time. From me, it's best to start at the beginning, work the way through.
So, Mark, do you think this is something that they will, a year, two years?
Possible. It'll be at least a year or two more.
With, with also these cuts, there are companies that, that do this. There are companies that would take your code and bring it up to state code for you. We might want to, we see as council, ask to get estimates when doing that.
I think that's the way.
That'd take, that'd take a lot of work off market, and get it done quicker.
And then our ordinance committees, that's essential, too.
Of course, the ordinance committee will be in control.
You're talking about?
A lot of committee meetings.
A lot of committee meetings.
Yes.
So let's, I think it's just get that, companies to give us kids to.
And also, there would be public hearings about code changes, is that correct?
Yes.
So that, that's gonna be a lot of public hearings, is that one involve the planning commission?
No, I would think with more.
It wouldn't have to, the planning commission is advisory on, you don't have to refer anything.
So you don't have to refer those. So when the planning commission meets, that's, that's at the, the head of the council?
Yes.
Okay, so the planning commission doesn't have to meet?
They, they do not have to, some matters get referred, or there, there may be some issues that town employees want the planning commission to be an extra set of eyes to take a look at, and so meetings get set up.
But that's up to council, whether to.
It's up to council.
Okay, listen to committee and.
Again, but any changes that would be made to our ordinances, would be bringing them to the state ordinances. We would not be changing any ordinances, other than being, having them be, being brought in compliance with state ordinances. So we're not changing any.
And that's keeping the Dillon rule in?
They're already in the, they're already in force. We just haven't said, if something changed, and we're behind the times, we need to get up to the times, and that's the state ordinances.
And that, and that's the municipal code that we have online?
That's correct.
So we, we gotta come in to get more of a view of the states, or the whole thing?
Yeah, but things have changed, and you don't know how much has changed.
It's like the code of Virginia changes every year.
So we're not changing any ordinances, we're bringing them in compliance with the state. And that was done in nineteen.
Codes.
Nineteen ninety-five, last company I told.
Ninety-five, ninety-seven.
I think if we're gonna do this, that we're gonna take the two-year route, because by the time that we get done, it's gonna be a time to do it again.
Let's, let's get an estimate on what it's gonna cost us to do that, but it might not be budgetarily possible at this point in time to do that. Also, it's gonna be an extra legal expense as well, so we need to look at that.
Virginia can't believe it.
But we, we, we should probably discuss all this in committee. So we have a motion and a second. Is that correct, Stan?
Yes.
We're talking a lot here.
Yes.
So motion and second, and we, we've had plenty of discussion, anybody that wants to be in the, know along this can speak with the committee members. Shall we send it to committee? All of that? All right. That will go to the ordinance committee. And is there anything else, Mr.?
No, thank you.
No, okay. Ms. Jennings is not here. And Councilmember Apple.
So we currently have a meeting sanitation committee meeting, we haven't scheduled this committee meeting yet due to Councilwoman Jennings' absence. As Chairman of this committee, I want to ensure that all members will be present to discuss these matters at hand. And I would also like to address the fact that the current state of our meetings is not what I ran to be a part of. It is honestly embarrassing to me to be a part of how things have been going. I would like to encourage more professional behavior from elected officials, including myself and citizens alike. We are all selling ourselves short of our capabilities and potential as a council and a town in whole, with disrespect and argument. While I think it is safe to say our entire panel welcomes constructive criticism, things have gotten a little bit out there. I think every individual involved in our town could have proved on how we are conducting business and our conversations with each other. If we would all band together and work towards the same goal with each other, rather than tearing at the seams fighting with each other because we cannot agree, we would be in much better shape. We all ultimately want Marion to be the best that it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, that was really good.
Yes, yes.
Anything further, sir?
I was with Beth Ferris on the Melipot playground, and I don't know if everyone knows where Melipot playground is, but it's up at the Marion Elementary School, and there's certain pieces of equipment that do need some work, and it's, it's for the children. Charlie was actually there as well. So that total came to four thousand and sixty dollars, and I spoke to the mayor, and I think we're gonna go ahead and fix that equipment so it's safe for the kids. That's it.
Good job. Good job.
Just so you know, if you remember, we talked about a couple of other things that was discovered, so that dollar number went up just a little bit, but it's in the bottom half.
Right, that's, not, not anything we haven't put out to be in sets, under our maintenance, so I believe we're okay there. Councilman Carter.
David, I attended every Henry's graduation, Spacerville, higher ed center, huge turnout, Winston-Salem, gosh, I lost hundreds of students, graduated, I think, in all the classes in L L, PAs, OTs, occupational, I mean, physical therapy, and there was another one, I can't remember. And then a few classes of OT and TT's have come in. Occupational therapy is down again, enrollment, and that gives me pause, because I think the reason is, these states, they started a program last year at other universities, so it's more competitive now, so, but all's looking well.
It's all right. Anything else, sir?
No, not really.
Councilmember Hayden, sure, next, okay, nothing, okay. And I have the mayor's report, and the first item on that is, we need to approve the resolution for Marilyn and Gary Peacock on their sixtieth wedding anniversary. We will dispense with the reading of the resolution, as everyone here is already aware of it, and they are not present, so I need a motion to approve that resolution. Next up, lady. One second.